What's up with you, sir?
My name is.
Sharon Cox.
Doug, you can.
Josh Presley.
Little House.
Alex Kirk.
All right, very good. So the first order of business is approval of meeting minutes. You have a copy of that on your desk, pardon me. Uh, take a minute to review this, if you haven't already looked at it. Is everybody had a chance to review the meeting minutes? Jay, do I have a motion to approve meeting minutes?
Motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting in September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second? We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Meeting minutes are approved. So the things out on the business is, uh, Michael. If y'all remember, Michael's, uh, leading us in a discussion for the land use ordinance. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right. Hope everyone had a wonderful last thirty days. It's good to see you all again. We're here to talk about zoning districts. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, forgive me, I've got some form of cold and I just don't want to share it. And I don't think you all want me to share it, so. Um, the purpose of this evening is to kind of break down where we think we're headed with some of your existing district regulations. As you'll note in the footnotes, right now, a lot of your district standards for what constitutes your residential, your industrial, your commercial are split out into three different chapters, meaning your staff and the average person looking up information has to go through three different chapters and do a lot of cross-reference. What we're going to do is consolidate all that information into one central chapter. There's no reason for staff, for you, for the general public, to have to go through three different chapters and try to find an answer. So that's what a lot of this is, to be blunt with you. I'm going to ask some pointed questions tonight. Uh, and we're going to talk about what's going to happen next month. So without further ado, I want to remind you all of one thing. And I know you probably got very tired of me saying it last month, but you're going to get tired of me saying it again tonight. Remember that everything you're doing in Fairview is related to the application and implementation of your adopted comprehensive plan. So where districts on your zoning atlas are permitted, where you want to see certain development activity, and where you're going to allow certain zoning districts is all based on implementing your comprehensive plan. So one example I give you is this. We know that this area here on your current future land use plan is reserved for future uh, commercial development, potential higher intensity development. So we know that whatever zoning goes there has to be in furtherance of those policies and those standards. The other thing I'm going to remind you of is this, and you ain't going to like this either. The twelve communities we're helping now don't like it any more than you do. Misery loves company. Remember that the North Carolina General Assembly, in its infinite wisdom, is trying to dictate to units of local government at both the county and the local municipal level, what is accepted levels of development in their jurisdictions. Uh, I serve, uh, in a similar capacity than I'm serving you, the town of Summerfield. You've all heard of Summerfield, I'm sure. They forcibly had a thousand acres of property removed from their jurisdiction by the General Assembly. Why? The developer was upset. Now, the developer had some good points, the town had some good points. They just unfortunately couldn't meet the bill, address their issues, and move forward productively. He had a very high intensive development project. The town was beginning to question why they should allow that development project to move forward, even though they had approved the rezoning to allow it. They were talking about percentage of rezoning. So this particular individual went to the General Assembly, petitioned, and got de-annexed forcibly. Why am I saying all this? I am very confident just in meeting you all, the time I've met you, talking to your staff, reading all the documentation you have, you would like Fairview to stay as it is, makes sense to you, it works for you, there's nothing wrong with that. But you do have to plan for the inevitable. What you don't want to do is find yourself in a situation where the General Assembly is either forcing you to accept more density than your current plan calls for, or as part of the recently approved study committee, looking at removing your charter because they don't think you deserve to play part. This is what the town of Summerfield's dealing with. So to that end, as we move forward with this document, you're going to see some districts that I've recommended you consider that may not make sense to you based on what your vision of Fairview is right now, but it will make sense as we start talking about what I think is coming down the pipe. And to be blunt, what I think is coming down the pipe is that the General Assembly has expressed huge concern about their perceived, or about the perceived, I should say, excuse me, lack of affordable housing options throughout the state of North Carolina. The way to solve that to them is require and allow more density. Higher density means lower overall cost for the housing, which means more people can make use of it. Doesn't matter what the local community wants. And Summerfield is my best example. My interest is something you plan for what's going to happen over the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. So as we start talking about these districts, I want you to remember that there's going to be some districts that are not going to be put on your zoning map when you adopt them. They're only going to be there if somebody wants to come and rezone the property. Everybody following me? It'll become painfully evident here in a few minutes. So with that, remember that no development activity can occur in your jurisdiction without a permit being issued. Can't make use of property, can't locate a structure, can't do anything without a permit being issued by yet. Your current ordinance says that in a couple of different places, but I'm smacking people right between the eyes with it in three. Remember that we have effectively four types of districts. General use, which is where you list a, have a list of permitted uses, have a u, a list of not permitted uses, any residential or non-residential settings. You have conditional zone, that's your planned development. You have overlay districts. Overlay districts, if you're thinking of a cake, the cake itself is your general district. The icing is the overlay, establishes additional flavor for the development process. Uh, I've included legacy districts, and you'll note by my footnote, I don't think we're going to have a need in Fairview for legacy districts. But what is a legacy district? I'm going to use Summerfield to give us an example. Summerfield effectively right now today has one general use zoning district. It allows one dwelling unit per acre of property, so forty thousand square foot minimum lot size. They used to have a district that would allow a lot size of thirty thousand square foot. You can't do that in town anymore. That is a legacy district. It still exists on the zoning map. There are still standards governing development, but you're not allowing any additional property to be rezoned to it. I don't see you all needing it, but it's a placeholder in case as we go through this process, you give me some direction that says you want to look at a legacy district. Yes, ma'am?
Are our farms and our agricultural areas regarded as legacy districts down there?
No, I think we're going to be accommodated in with the current ordinance, just with rebranded districts. Remember that bona fide farms are not exempt from your land use regulations, they're only exempt from county regulations. I'm not saying you should overly regulate them, but they are subject to land use regulation. Unlike counties that are forbidden from regulating bona fide farms, you have, you establish zoning and you regulate farm activity. How do you go about that, your business?
How do we protect it? I feel like we are approaching with all of this a time where we're not regarding that agriculture, which is what started Fairview.
Well, I'm going to give you two answers to that question. Number one, how you protect it? Is when we're developing your future land use map and your COP plan, identifying areas where farms are going to be preserved and protected, rural conservation areas. That's the first answer. The second answer is this. By your COP plan and by your zoning map, and this is the draft where we're starting to look at individual existing land uses, you're going to be zoning and maintaining zoning that doesn't allow high intensity development in areas where there's farming. So there is no, I hate to say incentive, but that's the word I'm going to use. There's no incentive for a farmer to do development activity if he or she doesn't want to. So those are the two main methodologies you're going to have to preserve your farm area. And without further ado, your first district.
Our farm, I mean, Union County has quote-unquote basically a land banking, banking system where the owner of a farm can join and put this land in this bank and then give some piece of that money. But it's secured for farming, all throughout the future.
Yeah, Orange County, North Carolina, where I used to be employed, had a very aggressive farm preservation program where we actually paid farmers to establish conservation easements. It's a similar process. Um, I don't know if it's going to be economically feasible for the town to do that, but that would be a good question to talk to your elected officials about, not me. Because I don't know from an incentive standpoint how much money you'd all have to pay to allow a farmer to establish a conservation easement to keep their farm property just for ag purposes. But that's not a bad program idea. I've actually managed portions of that program in Orange County. I wasn't the administrator. David Stansel, uh, was the farm preservation specialist in Orange County when I was there. He did an excellent job. So that's something, if you'd like me to take to your elected officials, we could. But that really needs to be a conversation when we schedule a joint meeting between you and the elected officials. The big issue with that is money. I'm not trying to be facetious or.
No, 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 but yeah, you're right. But I say ridiculous cheap, I'm talking a couple hundred dollars.
I wish we could get away with that, we can't.
I think his prices here in this urban area, I mean, you couldn't avoid it. You'd have to raise your taxes so high that the, the development rights on a three hundred acre farm would be six million dollars, let's say. And, and you can't, you just don't have that kind of money. Now, Huntersville did that, and they bought several farms, the development rights of several farms.
They allowed farming, you shrink what development rights are in a certain key area. And some farmers love the idea, and I'm not saying don't look at it, I am saying that it's expensive. So your resource conservation district, we're rebranding it RCO five, Y O five. Well, as we put in the footnotes, there's a bill before the General Assembly that said, this is going to be a theme, so my apologies, that basically says zoning districts need to reflect the allowable density for the district. So in this district, you need two acres, uh, roughly eighty thousand square foot, let's say your current code, to develop an RCO five district. So if R one, just to take the example to its logical step, uh, is one dwelling unit per acre, R C O five, point five, says you have to have two acres to do a dwelling unit. That's your current policy. Your setbacks, we're not changing because we can't create non-conformities. The other thing you're going to note is we're making sure that every one of your districts has an applicability section. Where is it allowed? How is it tied to your COP plan? Remember, this is all intended to implement a COP plan. So this ordinance is going to match that map. Makes it easier for you all to address higher dense development in areas you don't want. And that's why I say the COP plan and future land use map is going to be so important. Um, we have some dimensional and ratio standards that we've consolidated from your current code. We have development notes, breaking down how subdivisions, how there could be some flexible development clustering if the developer chooses along and not violating the density. So on a ten acre lot, just to take this to its logical conclusion, in this district, you can have five dwelling units. Through a flexible development process, and these are all dry erase, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. If this is your ten acre tract of land, and this goes to your point, sir, and I want to develop this, I want five units. Well, it only makes sense for the town of Fairview to offer this individual if they want to do it. What are the road? One, two, three, four, five. And have the rest of that as open space or farm and preservation area. That's what a flexible development subdivision does. Allows you to cluster, I'm sorry, I keep walking or flying with you. It allows you to cluster the lots, reduce the overall impact on the property from grading, from establishing roadway to dealing with stormwater. You get the benefit of the development, but you get the preservation of the area.
Plus it's the same units per acre.
Yeah, you are limited to the density, correct. Everybody following me?
Now, would you have five separate or six separate, uh, tracts of land?
Yep. So you can have the five lots that you're permitted, and then one huge tract of land that's probably going to be in some form for either conservation easement or just as dedicated open space owned and fee simple by these property owners with no development rights attached to it.
Ed, isn't this what the developer tried to do with that flood zone?
Yeah, we, we used to have a clustering, uh, when it related to flood hazard areas.
Basically, they wanted to put, about, they wanted, they said they were going to be like, what, zero point three? And they go, well, there's like three hundred acres of land we can't build on, we're going to include that and actually turns out to be like point eight, and make it clustered.
Yep. So that's a tool we're going to put in your toolbox, because bluntly, um, I am a huge proponent of this construct because what it allows us for this to effectively serve is both recreational need for this subdivision, these residents, also serves to protect farmland. Serves to protect environmentally sensitive areas, to go to your point, sir. I'm a big proponent of flood plan being in open space. Why? There's no development, there's going to be no impact from the general public.
Under the current circumstances, we don't have, um, public water systems and sewer systems. You would have to have that land to incorporate those facilities.
Yep, each individual lot would have its own well and septic system.
It's going to be small.
Would you, would it be possible to have the septic field in the open space?
Um, there are provisions in certain communities, I've written that, but I define the open space differently. So to, to give you a direct answer to your question, let's use a different color. What I have written for a couple of communities, including one I worked for nine, for nineteen years, is that if purple soil, but this lot is right here, this becomes, it's an open space area, but it's conveyed with this property, and it can only be used for septic. Same with Gopher here.
Who did this?
We have done that before.
Not even, just the last, just the last developer did this, last ten.
This is nothing new. A lot of communities do it. We're going to memorialize it in your code.
When, now you say it's part of our toolbox, that's not something, that's something that we can allow, uh, a developer to do. It's not necessarily something that they can, I, I guess, do on their own?
Well, they're going to go through whatever process we create for it, yes, sir. It's their choice.
Is, is their choice to do it this way, or is our choice to let them do it this way?
Well, it's their choice to go through that process. What we're doing is establishing the rules and how you do it. So it's, we're giving you the choice. Um, how do you, you know, what do you want to do? Now, most developers, and, and I don't pretend to speak for all developers, but most developers who can get in with a road, another infrastructure, for half the cost of putting in a long snaking road, choose that option. Especially if they don't have any liability as relates to the open space.
The problem we're having is the easements to those lots with the septic area would have to be configured so strangely that in five years, you wouldn't know where the septic field was or the lines to get that.
The subdivision plot that is recorded with this establishes the easement lines is needed to the lot.
What if they, what if, and I, just an example, that there's a tract of land twenty feet wide, and you've got three going down that, that strip, and it's in the middle of woods? I mean, it can call, I'm leaning toward getting them on the same property.
Well, that's the preference, but.
The, the preference, because it just creates all kinds of problems if you have like this.
I don't dispute that. Um, in one community specifically, we limited the total amount of offsite septic to a percentage of the lots proposed.
You said no lot built on that open space land. Who would do it on that open space land?
It honestly depends on, on the developer's interest. It would probably be, most likely, the five property owners would own one-fifth of the property.
They would have a lot built.
Yep. Town wouldn't, the developer wouldn't.
Could they create a homeowners association and then head authority to do it?
You can actually have a maintenance agreement. You don't necessarily have to create a property owners association. But it would spell out that lot owner one here has a one-fifth undivided interest in that property. Lot two would have a one-fifth. So any major storm comes through, creates problems on the property, all the property owners have to work together to fix it. Any other questions? So that's your current district rebranded, okay? R one. You guys have any, that's, guess what, how many units you get per acre?
One.
There you go. And I actually am a proponent of this idea, even though I don't like the heavy-handed man of the states doing it. You shouldn't have to necessarily go into an ordinance and try to figure out how a community is defining R twenty, R thirty, R forty, R fifty, whatever it is. There should be some standardization in nomenclature. The General Assembly is going to be pushing this. So I'm nipping at the butt, and I'm setting Fairview up to basically be compliant with what I think the state law is going to read in six months. So this would be one dwelling unit per acre. Now, if we look at this land use map again, and this is just my initial thought, if you're designating areas R C, the next tier of development activity would be the R one. As you're getting closer to what you're defining as urban areas in Fairview, you're going to want more intensive development. Just makes sense. You're preserving the outer areas of your rural community, you're designated in those areas where, let's say suburban or neighborhood type development would be reasonable. That's R one. I don't know where it's going to go on the map yet, some of that depends on who you are, okay? We also have the flexible development note there. We're bringing back R two for you folks. How much density can you get per acre in R two?
Two.
There we go.
Red.
So R two would have to be in areas that are more urban in nature, where you're going to probably have to have the expectation of public water and sewer being available. Um, I worked in a jurisdiction, it was a county, where you could actually get septic repair and well on a twenty-one thousand square foot lot. But it's all soil-based. You don't have the ability to do anything about that. And remember, there's language throughout the whole document here that talks about, your local health department has the final say in how big that lot's going to be. Why? Because they have to permit the septic system. As we go down. R three, not going to ask because you already know, three dwelling units per acre. This would have to be on urban services, public water, public sewer. No way around it. Ed, however, brought up a point we're going to talk about in a minute, but I want to make sure I'm answering your questions first.
Okay. Now, we had a developer that wanted to bring in essentially as a package treatment plant. And that's, that's brilliant, who's going? Package treatment plant. And I've seen it where the community's like, oh, I ain't going to do it anymore. Then who's going to do it?
Yep.
And that becomes a real problem, a real, real problem, real fast.
I despise package treatment systems for the very reason you're bringing up, sir. Because somebody gets tired of paying for it, who then has the responsibility for it? What happens when it fails?
And it will.
Who's, who's going to bail the community out? And as I told Ed when he asked me that same question, I worked in a community where we had to do an emergency amendment to both our COP plan and our zoning ordinance because we had three communities that packed the treatment systems that they all, oh, it's too expensive, oh, it's too hard, oh, it's too this, oh, it's too that, and they failed. So we had to work with two local municipalities to extend water sewer to service them so they could still have reasonable use of their property. It wasn't my probably best moment, but it gave me a lot of personal satisfaction. I stood before the board in a public hearing and said, well, they were stupid enough not to maintain the system, make them pay for pumping hall for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, that was, you should have said that.
Oh, but it made me feel better. I was lambasted. Deservedly so. I'm not, I'm not complaining. I knew it was going to happen to me. But the reason, I'm glad you brought that up, and what Ed and I were talking about, and what you're not going to want to hear, but you're going to need to hear it. It's my humble opinion that the General Stat, the General Assembly, and they've already done some of this with their recent bill, is going to basically say to county health departments, if you have an engineered system, even, even if it's a package treatment system, because an engineered system meets state standards, you can't say no.
Can you force the developer and then also the community to provide a bond in case if that's bad?
Good question. As of right now, we don't think so, the way the state laws re, reads. But one of the reasons we're looking at, again, graduated density that's going to be managed by your COP plan, and again, I'm going to use this map, and I'm making a couple of assumptions based on what Ed and I think. I don't throw that under the bus with me. But remember, you're, when you're doing your COP plan, are going to designate rural, neighborhood, suburban, urban areas for development. And if you're encouraging your urban areas and locations of your community where there's a high anticipation that there's going to be public water sewer available one day, that's part of the planning process. So the R three is an example. If we're to assume. If we're to assume sewer was coming through Unionville, this area down here could be your sort of urban complex, your urban area. And you're banking on the notion that at some point in time, public water and sewer would be available. Now, can you have a package treatment system? Should've said, where else? Can you have a package treatment system up here? Well, you could if the state has to approve it. But remember, your density up in here is gonna be the RC.05 density. Your comp plan's gonna say, this is rural. You're not gonna allow rezoning to turn that into R3. Because it's inconsistent with the comp plan. Remember, all zoning decisions, when you're doing a map amendment, have to be based on your comp plan. Now, you have the right to amend your comp plan, sorry, as part of a development approval. That's already guaranteed under state law. But as your comp plan is going to exist based on the initial conversation with Ed, with Ed, the other staff members, we're looking at preserving most of, ignore the portion of Fairview as a rural area. Low density, low development activity. Let your zoning map and your future land use map dictate where you want to see urban development. Don't pre-zone areas. And we're not gonna be doing that with you. We're gonna be zoning based on current land use.
And then I keep thinking, but on your high density, uh, road transportation's always a big issue.
Yep.
And in the past, you've always said, okay, that's a state issue. But now I understand that, uh, responsibility is being passed on down to the county and the towns. Can we say, okay, if you want a high-density area, you're, has to meet a certain criteria?
Well, it's gonna meet public road criteria by DOT, correct. It's also gonna meet state fire code. In terms of fire apparatus. So, if you have, let's say, a hundred residential dwelling units, fire code apparat, the fire code's gonna say you have to have minimum of two, maximum of three individual entry points to allow for entry and exit. What your ordinance is gonna read, at least when I get through with it, so long as Ed and you all are happy with it, how your ordinance is gonna read is, we're deferring to the state public road standard with a minimum sixty-foot rideaway. So, the rideaway you have to create will allow for a state main fair road. And here's the road. Remember, DOT will not allow you to turn a road over to them for maintenance unless you meet their density requirements. I think the minimum, and it does vary some from district to districts, so forgive me, um, minimum is anywhere from about eight to twelve lots before they would consider accepting it for public maintenance.
Yeah.
So...
And it's more criteria for that, yeah.
And five lot subdivisions, an example, you still may require a sixty-foot rideaway, but you may have to allow them to have a road that doesn't necessarily be public.
It's, um, doesn't meet the standards that they stated it over.
Right.
But I think what we need to do is to migrate into what would really be a twenty-four, twenty-four-foot wide road.
Well, I certainly would love to do that, but I'm gonna throw cold water on you and I'm sorry.
Only the first time.
State law was just amended to say you can't exceed DOT requirements for road design. So, if DOT says, the number of lots proposed could be served by, let's say, eighteen-foot wide roadway. I'm just giving you that example. You all have to follow that. You can't be more restricted than DOT. What's gonna be fun is to see what happens between DOT and the fire code. Because the fire code requires a landing strip or a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
To allow a fire truck to turn. And DOT doesn't wanna maintain those.
How about you maintaining? Does that still apply?
Yeah. If you all have a power bill system, program, and you accept it to the local standard, yes. That's one of the reasons we're gonna be mandating or recommending you all adopt some minimum standards. Rideaway, minimum pavement width. But we have to do it consistent with DOT. We can't be any more or less restrictive.
I mean, you go back to, actually, it's a federal guidelines. A fire truck, the minimum ten, ten side turn radius is eighty fifty.
Mm-hmm.
It ain't twenty.
Yeah.
I thought these levels one bill is twenty.
There's nothing wrong with three, four turns.
For a fire truck?
I've seen him do it.
Mm, running off the grass.
Actually, we had a, we had a proj, we had a project, we had a subdivision in Orange County. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to compare you to another jurisdiction. But since I managed this process, we had a cul-de-sac in the subdivision. And my fire marshal obviously was a little irate because he didn't wanna have to do three-point turns. Well, there's nothing in the fire code that says that's not permissible. What he did find in the fire code was that this gentleman, this developer, had to install turn points. Where the fire truck comes in, backs up, turns, backs up. It's a pain in the toots. I ain't gonna try to tell you another one. But that was an option that was provided to the, to the developer. He chose it. There's several different ways to apply the fire code. Any other questions? I'll be free for now. So, now...
Everybody's allowed to ask questions.
No, everybody's allowed to ask questions. Now, we wanna get to your commercial districts. You're gonna have a main street in this one. At least, that's my recommendation. Um, your, your main street, what I wanna remind you for your current code, you have seven general commercial districts, and that doesn't include your light industrial district. Um, you only have B4 and LI on your, on your map. The MS is your B1, just rebranded. Where's the main street district gonna go? Get maxed out. An area you're reserving and identifying for a main street core, whatever that is. And you get to help me decide that next month. But this is intended to establish your office, retail, restaurant, walkable area, central area. So, allow you to establish effectively what the B1 was designed to be. So, your density or your dimensional requirements are the same for your current code. They're not changing your setbacks. You obviously gotta figure out wastewater. Good luck. Gonna have septic and well. Gonna have good soil. I'm not trying to be cute, but that's, that's an honest answer. I hate to tell you. Uh, and then obviously, the development has to comply with your code. Your neighborhood commercial takes place in your B2 district. Now, neighborhood commercial, and Ed and I were talking about this earlier, so let's give you the example. Yeah, this is gonna be your main street area here. Your neighborhood commercial will be surrounding it or in key areas you identify as part of your comp plan, where you think commercial activity would be reasonable. So, the people don't have to drive all the way here to take care of their initial needs. They could, let's say, travel here. You could allow minimum retail, non-residential development, certain key areas of Fairview, where it actually makes sense. Minimum lot size is one acre. I'm sorry, sir.
No problem. Uh, I got bits on a project where commercial was back into a school.
Okay.
Buffer had to be a hundred feet on my side, on commercial's side. So far, we've not talked about anything about Buffer. You gonna have another chart for Buffer for zoning, okay?
Yeah, we'll get to Buffer's property in a couple months. We gotta talk about the land use first.
Well, let's go back to...
We're gonna love Boppers.
To the, um, the main street lot size, why does it say not applicable?
Well, your current code is not applicable.
Why is it...
Because it's all predicated dependent on the size necessary to support the project. So, building, parking, wastewater, it's all gonna be designed to address what's it gonna take to develop that main street district. You have a parcel of property that can be supported on 20,000 square foot with septic and well, then it only has to be 20,000 square foot. You have a parcel of property that doesn't have fertile soil, you're gonna have to figure it out. So, you may have to buy him a property. You'd have to rezonate. My hope is that we locate your main street district in such a way, or we design it on the comp plan, we're locating it in such a way that it could be viable for service by public water and sewer when it comes in. That's my hope. And I'm na, I'm naive. I freely admit it, but that's part of the reason we're doing the comp plan process with the UDA. And I maintain for your neighborhood commercial, your existing minimum lot size of one acre from your current code. Everybody kind of understand the, the, the aspects of where I think we're headed with some of this? I mean, this is not all set in stone. But what I'm primarily trying to make sure you're all comfortable with is that we're consolidating and capturing all the standards, governing what sets up these districts in one central location instead of three. So, all your dimensional ratio standards, the purpose, authorized uses, applicability, dimensional ratio standard notes, development notes, what you have to do is all in one section. Makes it a lot easier for people to find information.
It's hard for me to go in there and think about, Fairview and our commercial district or business district. And we got two roads. We got major 601 and 218. We're screwed. What's first?
Yep.
So, where is that going?
Well, I think there's, uh, there's Harvey, the commercial at some point.
Yeah, where you throwing them?
You're gonna see a lot of what I call the main thoroughfare. Probably different areas of commercial activity, depending on where you are in the town. And bluntly, some of that's gonna be predicated on where the potential for water sewer could be, which I think is gonna be down at this area. So, a lot of your higher density, to just give you the right answer, sir, a lot of your higher density is gonna be here for the comp plan. That's my opinion right now.
Michael, are we gonna assume to, to be assuming that we are going to get water and sewer, public water and sewer at some point?
I think you have to assume that on some level, yes. I think some of it's gonna be mandated whether you like it or not. State's moving to a more regional model for provision of utilities. And I think state is interested in seeing more intensive development where there's utilities available. So, I think you have to plan on where you think some of that's gonna happen. Now, I'm gambling it's gonna be in that southern area.
Wouldn't it be cheaper probably for it to be in that southern area because they're already in Union County? If you go north, you're gonna be in someone else's county.
Well, on one level, you're right. It would be more reasonable, it would be cheaper. But as Ed pointed out to me, and I agree with him, there were areas up in this general vicinity where septic, excuse me, sewer system could've gone that would allow for a greater area of Fairview to be available, because then you rely on gravity. Where was the system you were talking about?
The county system?
Yeah.
The county, I think between here and, uh, New Salem somewhere, would it? That would, uh, maybe out on Rocky River?
Yeah.
That to me made sense. I don't, I don't know why that didn't...
Some of it's gonna be dependent on, on, on issues you all are not gonna have any direct involvement in. I hope you get, you're part of the conversation. You should be. And my hope is with the comp plan, what we're gonna do is help you at least be able to have a seat at the table. Uh, your next district collapses your B3, B6, and office. And part of the reason is because they all effectively do the same thing. There are plumbing areas, there are office institutional areas. So, the purpose of this district provides suitable sites for concentration of non-retail employment, institutional uses, uh, and services. That would include medical, manufacturing, office, religious, educational, recreational, and government. I don't see the need for you to have three separate districts that effectively do the same thing. Just, it's a waste, waste of, waste of time for you all, in my humble opinion. I don't know why that happened. Because I clicked the wrong button. It's user error. We all know it. It's okay. Uh, we have general commercial district. This is larger scale along major transportation corridors. That's your current definition. This takes the place of Fairview, the B4. So, this is your, I hate to use the term strip center, but it's applicable. Your strip center development, your larger retail development, office, services, et cetera. As for where this gonna, is this gonna go? I don't know yet. We get to play with crayons next month and figure it out. Uh, next is your light industrial district. You have some ally on the ground. This is effectively your current process, your current standard, to address all the light industrial you have. One thing that Ed and I have talked about, you have a mining overlay. I don't know why you have a mining overlay. I wanna get rid of the mining overlay. Are you all okay if I kill the mining overlay?
Yeah, that didn't make sense.
Okay?
We're not as far as we know in the gold district, are we?
No.
You get what I mean by that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, so next was the conditional districts. Remember what a conditional district is? Mr. Medlin, I'm gonna pick on you. You own this parcel of property right here. You think this would be a perfect spot for a nice mixed-use development. Some residential, some commercial, some office. The conditional process effectively allows you as an applicant to come to the community with a site-specific development plan. This is how I'm gonna develop the property. This is the land uses I'm gonna have. This is my density. This is my open space. This is my transportation. Planning board reviews it, makes a recommendation, offers suggestions on conditions. The elected officials hold a legislative hearing, determine whether or not they're gonna approve that site plan. Mutually agreed-to conditions can be invoked, have to be agreed to by both the town and the applicant writing. But the conditional process allows the town to consider site-specific development projects. What the use is gonna be, how they're gonna be developed, where they're gonna be located, how you're gonna handle traffic, how you're gonna handle public safety, soup to nuts. This is a valuable tool because it does allow you to work more closely with the developer to address onsite issues. And it's consistent with the law, which is more important. Northern General Statute recognizes the conditional district process. Leave what's in your current code because some of your current language doesn't follow state law. So, this takes the place effectively of your planned development district. This, Joe, I wanna stop, point something out to you all specifically, and ask a question. We are recommending that if somebody wants to develop mobile home park in your community, would have to go through a CZ process. Where they might have to demonstrate with a site-specific development plan, how that private system would fly with your code. And I saw you shaking your head, sir, and I'm not gonna ignore you, but I am throwing out that under state law, you have to make reasonable accommodations to allow for manufactured housing.
Where is that?
NCGS 160D907? Or 903? I get those two confused. One is family care home and one is manufactured housing.
Well, you're close enough. I don't know how to get around there.
Well, I'm gonna see if I can pull it up for you real quick.
160G is close enough for me. 160D is close enough for me.
Hang on one second.
I don't know if I would yet, if purchased in a.
All right, 903 is ad uses. Snatch radio, family care home. Manufactured homes is 910, God, I'm losing my mind. General Assembly finds that manufactured housing offers affordable housing opportunities for low and moderate income residents. Local government may adopt and enforce appearance in the metro criteria for manufactured homes. Local government may not adopt and enforce other regulations or other provisions that have the effect of excluding manufactured homes.
Now, is that manufactured homes or manufactured home communities?
Well, it's the same thing. Now.
Wait a minute, that sounds like.
Well, no, it is now because.
It is, yeah.
How, how can you have a home in a community?
Because a community is individual manufactured homes.
But if you have a mobile home on the designated one-acre property.
If I wanted to do a subdivision of just manufactured housing, what I'm recommending this community do is make it a conditional zoning process. Now, to go to your point, and I'm not saying you don't have a valid point, but let's say it is in the RC district, you would allow manufactured homes. That means that somebody can come in, do a two-acre minimum subdivision, manufactured homes on each lot. It's not a problem. My hope is that you adopt standards that address some of the concerns you have on manufactured home parks. Instead of me as a property owner who doesn't have to tell you what I'm developing it for. But I have this parcel of property. I can put in a road. I can get a new marker.
You can buy some new markers.
There we go. I can come in, put in my road, and do all my lots. I don't have to legally tell you what this is. It's just a subdivision of property. You don't have the right to ask me that question. What are you going to put there on your business? I'm creating lots, you're giving your subdivision. What do you care about that for then? If you have to force them to go through the conditional zoning process, you have greater opportunity to work on where that can and cannot be located in your community.
How can we do that at the state's base of looking at manufactured homes as being?
Because you will be legal with state law. You're providing the opportunity for it to occur. Doesn't have to be easy.
Ours is right now, we, we, we can't deny a single wide we don't particularly want. So what we do, we don't deny, but we make it a harder process to do it. So what I say is, why can't that be a double wide, 1,200 square feet? And that's, that's like a home.
So.
But you regulate them, but you don't deny them. That's like a, uh, entertainment, a built entertainment. You can't deny, you just got to regulate.
You got to regulate the living daylights out of it.
I've heard about yours, but you tend to, you, you solve.
Well, a manufactured home is technically one built to HUD standards that were adopted in 1976. So it's on a permanent chassis. Wheels are typically removed, that's just the tongue, and then it's put on a foundation. Anything made pre-76, if you want to get anal retentive about it, it's technically a mobile. Doesn't meet current HUD standards, doesn't meet wind zone standards. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to write your ordinance that basically says it has to meet the manufactured, uh, the housing redevelopment manufactured home standards from 76 on.
That's what it is now.
Yeah, so. And the reason, Sharon, to go to your point, I like this process is because it allows you for your comprehensive plan to identify areas where it would make sense, instead of just somebody coming in doing a subdivision and being able to do it willy-nilly. It hopefully gives you more control. I'm not saying you all shouldn't have concerns, but I am saying this is a better way, in my opinion, to navigate with it.
Can you require a conditional on a piece of property that's, that is owned by right?
Yes. I can do anything I want.
Well, I know.
Until, until a court of competent jurisdiction tells me otherwise, I can do whatever I want.
So if, if, and the reason I'm asking, in Huntersville, if it's, if it's owned residential, it's my right residential, so you don't have to go through the conditional requirements.
Correct. What I'm saying is to do a park, to do a subdivision. You have to go through the conditional process.
Oh, okay.
That, that's the only difference. You're a thousand percent right, but.
Just a mobile home park.
Correct.
So if you have a subdivision, you're going to call it free houses. You still need to get through the special use.
Conditional zoning.
Conditional zoning.
That's where I'm going to push. Now, you all may not like that, that's fine, I'm not saying you don't, that's part of the reason you're going to be giving me feedback. But one of the reasons I've recommended the CZ process is to try to give you greater control over where they're located. And then the planned unit development follows your correct standards. I happen to like planned unit developments. It gives you more ability to work with a developer. We get to the mining, you've already kind of answered that question, I'm killing mining, thank you. And as of right this moment, I don't know of any legacy districts you guys are going to need. So your homework. You don't have to give me comments in advance of next month's meeting because this is going to come back at next month's meeting as we start talking about the comp plan. Your homework is to, in Fairview, think about where you believe some of these districts would be the most appropriate. Because next month, what we're going to do is we're going to take this map here and start mapping out where we think some of these activities are going to go. Now, it doesn't mean these districts are going to stay this way, because you're going to get any comments on these districts. And it doesn't mean everything's going to be this way. I am going to be very anal retentive and recommend that you look at some of the higher density adoption, higher density residential. And only because then nobody can claim you're not perceiving it. I don't want you ended up going before the general assembly and the study committee to be told, well, you're just playing town, you're not really a town. Unfortunately, I think that's where we're headed. And it's not just you. There's about 60 communities that I think the general assembly would love to kill. And I know who's number one on their head for it.
When they kill a community, what, what happens to it?
So their charters revoked. The county would then have typically 90 to 120 days to zone the area and bring it into compliance with their comp plan.
It would just be unincorporated Union County at that point?
Yep.
We wouldn't be absorbed by Indian Trail.
Well, it could happen if Indian Trail wants to come get you, but I don't think that's, I don't know how likely that is.
Stallings was looking to take over a parcel of land that wasn't connected to them, so.
Yeah, I mean, you would know better than me, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to try to. You know, Unionville would be a good, obviously entity, because they're right where they are. Um, but if your charters revoked, then Union County would be rezoning this entire area. And you'd be subject to Union County standards until somebody gobbled you up. Now, that presumed a lot, because remember, annexation in North Carolina now is different than it used to be. Has to be voluntary. Only way Unionville could force somebody is if they provide services to them already. So if Unionville, I shouldn't. If Unionville works out a deal with you all and extends water sewer, but it's Union County system, right, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. All of my logic is it's still loaded. If it's Unionville's system and they extend the lineup, and you all are done away with by the North Carolina General Assembly, Unionville could say, well, we serve these properties to an existing water sewer utility agreement. We're annexing them, that's now part of Unionville. That's perfectly reasonable. And they'd be justified in doing it. Do I really think that's going to happen? I'm scared enough that it will happen, and I'm trying to give you tools so you can argue. We have opportunity. The developer's just going to have to work for it. So. First thing I'm going to ask is this, everybody comfortable with the notion that I'm collapsing your zoning ordinance or your zoning districts into one section versus three? There's not going to be the need to read three chapters to find information on what a zoning district is. Everybody understanding this is comfortable with the consolidation, okay?
Yes.
I know you're not uncomfortable with the districts, I didn't expect you to be, and I'm not asking you to be. But what we're going to do for next month is start figuring out where some of these districts could go, if we need to change the names, if we need to change the concept. What you're also going to get next month is your current, as best as I can put it together given the federal shutdown, your current demographics. Would you believe the US Census website crashes every five minutes? Which makes trying to get data a real pain to the tourist.
How many of those surveys did you get from the town?
I believe there were 60 surveys.
Came down on Facebook, too.
We can, if you all want, reopen the survey. I'm just giving you the options.
No way.
But I have to consolidate what they did, and I have to report to you what they said.
I mean.
Okay. I'm not going to say you're wrong, because I haven't looked at all of them.
When you're talking about these districts, these high-density districts, that's not empowering developers anymore. It's just, it's just saying, this is where we can conceivably see it being.
Correct.
But that's not giving a developer any more power than.
No.
They already have to.
Correct.
Subdivide.
They still have to go through the appropriate process. The other thing I want to remind everybody is this. Just because I'm asking you to create an R3 district, I'm not recommending we're putting it anywhere on your zoning map. We're not pre-zoning property here. So if somebody wants to do R3 in an area you've designated for early growth, fine, you have to make sure it meets the code.
Won't some people, though, though, consider that downzoning?
Hmm.
Yes.
It's only downzoning.
I know it is, but won't they, they'll believe it, whether you say it or not?
Oh, I'm sure they will, but I at least have the law on my side.
Yeah, well, that's true.
And since I'm not rezoning property for them, I'm not actually doing anything to their property.
Example, I own a farm up in the rural section, and all of a sudden I changed my mind and a developer was going to give me $10 million to buy my property, he must put homes on. Well, that's not where we want to do that.
Well, you know, here's the beauty of that, Ed. First of all, I understand that you're right. But second of all, if I'm consistent with your current comp plan, I'm going to pick on this property right here. Because it's big. I'll pick on this property right here. They're only going to get the development consistent with what your current code calls for, which is what the new ordinance is going to call for. There's no opportunity to rezonate to R3, just using the example, because it won't meet any of the criteria to be rezoned by R3. Wouldn't meet any of the criteria now under your current ordinance if they wanted to do a higher intensity development. So not losing any of that. I know that won't be how it's perceived. But if they can show me how they could do a high-density development under your current code.
That's right, that's right. That, that will come up.
I know.
So we're more comfortable with our current code, but, but what you started out with was to show us that the boogeyman is out there and the general assembly has some idea.
Yeah. And I know you're not going to like you're in the misery loves company, but you're in the same boat as every other municipality in North Carolina. Summerfield, again, I hate to keep comparing you all to others. Excuse me, I don't want to be called. Summerfield has flat-out told me in three meetings, you better not propose a residential district that has less than one acre minimum lot size or density. Sorry. What you also don't know is that Summerfield's actually under a federal lawsuit right now because they're being accused of excluding minorities because their minimum lot size is one unit for 43,000 square feet.
Who wrote that lawsuit by?
The MWA CP. Funded, I think, don't quote me because I don't have the proof, funded by the property owner who recently got deannexed. This is his party gift to Summerfield.
And you can say that wouldn't happen to everybody, it does all the time.
Absolutely. So Summerfield, now under a federal, sorry, federal lawsuit, is going to have to adopt additional general use zoning districts that have higher residential density. They're going to do the same thing that I'm recommending you do. Because to me, it makes sense. If this is Summerfield. You're not putting the districts on the ground for zoning. You're just identifying where in the comp plan they could most logically go. The developer still has to go through a process to rezonate a property to get it to happen. And that's the catch. Don't pre-zone property. Let the market decide where it's going to go. You're going to establish the framework with that land use plan about where it should go. And when somebody decides to come to your community and say, oh, no, no, it should be up here to the north, with what?
When this is all said and done, we're all done with this, you're going to present this to the council, correct?
Yes.
Is that the only conversation you're going to have with them, is there going to be?
There's going to be multiple conversations with the council. Because after I present to you all, we're going to be presented the council giving them an update and letting them know where we're headed.
When's that going to be?
Not sure yet. I want to get more work with you all under my belt before we talk about where we are right now. But no, they're going to get more than one bite at the apple.
So there's a lot of information to present to somebody.
Yep. And I know this is overwhelming, I'm not trying to overwhelm you. Not really trying to scare you. But I am trying to be honest with you. I, I see the boogeyman. He's comp. My only desire is to make sure that you won't be beat by the boogeyman. And I'd like to think that we're going to get you on a path that nobody can claim Fairview has not met its obligations with concessions. So we're going to be diversifying your community a little bit.
The public's not going to like that.
I was going to say, I was like, we're getting hung either in this room or outside, but.
Someone's going to throw a brick my window.
Well, we're not giving permission. And that's, that is the first thing if you tell somebody who's going to be all fired up. We're not giving permission for all of this to happen. We're not going to become Charlotte or Matthew's or.
But I will say, Black Summerfield, at some point, somebody is going to get the idea that they can make an argument that your community by design is intending to discourage minority homeownership. That may not be practically at all what's happening. But guess what? That's going to be the argument. Like or not. I don't know, you don't. I wouldn't if I were you.
Affordable housing is the key issue in North Carolina right now. We don't have enough of it.
It's one of the main key issues.
I mean, developers actually make a lot of money. Yeah, they, same house, same, the same house on one acre that can't be dirted.
Yeah.
And also for, yeah, the house, same amount of land increases. Just on geography.
Well, the other issue is who's defining what affordable housing is?
A bunch of idiots seem like.
So how are the communities around, like Blomrock and Lynnville, you know, the ones that have the lower density but have much more expensive homes handling this? Is it the same way that we're handling this, or are they going to get accused of?
I'm sure that that's going to be in the playbook for several people, for developers to make that argument, yes. Has it happened yet? Not tonight. And again, Summerfield's unique only because I think, again, this was the party gift from somebody that wanted the town to suffer. And if I could also be so bold, only with you, I do believe that there are some current residents in Summerfield that help engineer it to embarrass the current board. residents in Summerfield that help engineer it to embarrass the current board if they don't like it.
Isn't there a bill in the state for one acre, one house, and a panel?
Well, first, directly expressed, yes, there have been bills in the General Assembly that say you have to allow a minimum of five dwelling units per acre if you're over a certain population size. And that's been kind of coming on and off the books for the last five, six years, that's nothing, that happens almost every other cycle.
Then we give a basis to do the zoning, we...
Yep. I'll give you another example, Orange County, North Carolina, where I used to work. We are the headwaters of three major watersheds, so we have some density issues we have to deal with. Some of our density is based on compliance with state watershed regulations, state law, okay? We had a developer all upset because he had an option on three hundred and sixteen acres of farm. It was in a protected watershed, but the density, first state rules, is one dwelling unit for two acres, but somehow it's my fault. So he threatened to sue, he threatened this, he threatened that. And I swear, there was a bill introduced with the General Assembly, changed the density just because it was Orange County. It failed miserably. Why? Because we have facts on our side. Curious what happens when you have facts. The other problem in Orange County was the fact that there's only one centralized water sewer system. It's controlled by a third-party government, it's called OASO, Orange Water Sewer Authority, and to get access to the property, this three hundred acres we were complaining about, that we were being sued... You'd have to extend the sewer lineup a major, major bridge line, build a packet treatment plant, extend the sewer down on a huge downfall along the line, and establish what would effectively have been a regional pump station. Anybody wanna guess how much that would have cost you? Take a guess.
Ten million.
Three hundred million dollars. Soils, easements, engineering, that's about a five-mile drop. It would have been Herculean effort. Once the developer heard that, he... Suddenly, the development project didn't have much interest in it. So, I appreciate the fact you're comfortable with the reorganization. I know you're reserving rights to comment on the district, that's fine, that's why we're also coming back next month. But next month, what I'd like you to do is start looking at your current future land use map, identifying where you think it's more reasonable for these things to go. We can talk about what some of these districts may or may not look like, and start talking about what your interest is. We will be looking at the survey data results. I dare say some of my recommendations are gonna fly in the exact opposite direction of some of those survey results, but part of my interest is to make sure that I'm giving you the tools so that nobody can claim you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing.
To me, I think that's the key, you just, and I have, we have been contacted by the General Assembly this year, asking us now, we, what were those, uh, things you were gonna supply when you became a town, and, and where is that document? I said, I can't find that document. I was like, I wasn't here. Trying to, he was an intern working for the chairman of some committee, that he wanted to find out what towns were small now and not, not doing anything, but how were they chartered? So they're, they're looking at them.
What is it that they wanted us to find?
How would y'all share a plan now?
We had to have two, two services at one time, then they changed the law to five, and we got hung up in the middle of that. So, it was a special local bill that gave us the two services, which was our thing, planning, zoning, and fire.
Yeah, they want to eliminate planning and zoning as one of the services. So, to be of a municipality today, to, to, just to expand on Ed's comment to you, sir, you have to supply certain services to your taxpayers. Let's say it's garbage pickup, lighting, road maintenance, public safety services. The talk that I'm hearing is that they're gonna mandate utilities. You have to be in the utility game somehow. Even if you're contracting with a county for the service, you still have to provide utilities.
So, I, I believe that we are contracted with Indian Trail for public effort of the police?
No.
Or is that Union County?
Yeah.
So, in, in that sense, would we be supplying the taxpayers with the public safety, but we're contracting with Union County?
If the question's what I have to do, someone's gonna allow that to maintain.
And, and if we were contracted with them, we're not contracted with them. Indian Trail is.
I thought we were the ones paying, uh, Union County to have...
Indian Trail pays about a hundred and ten thousand an officer per year. Per year. Because they wanted a higher level of service. They got fifteen officers, we got, we got some, we never know how many.
Yeah, we share.
We share, we're supposed to, yeah.
Well, that still is providing service, no?
Yeah, but they wanted a higher level of service.
They're gonna mandate a higher level of service.
And they're willing to pay for it.
Now...
Officers in Indian Trail just stay in Indian Trail, and that's why they pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for that officer.
To put this in perspective, and again, I'm sorry to keep bringing up other municipalities as an example, I think Summerfield's last tax eval was effectively a nickel per hundred. That was their tax. Those, that tax dollar paid for a recreation department, planning department, um, town manager, town clerk, finance. Summerfield does not maintain roads, they own a public works department, they contract with Gilbert County Sheriff, and I think there's a mutual aid agreement with Greensburg, because they're right at Greensburg to live. To address what they perceive to be the path forward to the General Assembly, I think their tax rate's gone from a nickel to fifteen cents. Why? They're trying to determine if they can have additional public safety officials part-time, garbage service, lighting, that they're gonna maintain, contract, but still maintaining.
Is that a public road lighting, or...
Yeah. So, they're expanding their services to meet what they perceive to be, um, the General Assembly's pushed to start revoking charters. This is not the first time the General Assembly's done this. The last purge, eighty-nine to ninety-three. I think it was late eighties, early nineties, that was the last great purge.
I'm just a little bit...
Uh, so this is not the first time they've done this. But their last concentrated effort was back in the late eighties, early nineties. And I wanna think about forty or fifty communities lost their charter.
That's where you had to push in the, in the nineties for annexation, too.
Yep.
You get bigger or you get out. And to provide the services, you had to get bigger.
And after that purge and, and annexation, do North Carolina realize a, a great recovery or revenue for satisfaction from having done that?
Nah. But it made somebody at the General Assembly feel better about themselves.
What are the sizes of those communities that got, uh, mixed?
Uh, they were, well, I hate to use the term because it's derogatory, I don't wanna be derogatory, they were paper towns. Some of them didn't charge taxes. They just formed and incorporated to prevent them from being annexed.
We have one in Union County.
Henry Bridge.
Henry Bridge doesn't charge a tax.
And that's...
They took them Christmas nice, though. And leave nothing till...
That's, that's technically about to change, too.
Yeah, they get certain revenues, sales tax, you know, but, but they don't get much, but they don't need much.
And I, whatever, Union County, one of these, I'm zoning here, Nancy Randall, I put over Union County maps, zoning, and picked out what we wanted to keep in there, and what we wanted to do, do a year change, and presented it to, uh, Bill Thomas, who's, who was on the, he was the chairman of the town board, and, and that went to, uh, Williams, you know, there. And that's how we got that beginning of the zoning.
You got one chance at that point to do that, it's harder to do it now.
Yeah. So what you're gonna get in your package for next month is you're gonna get your demographic data, you're gonna get the survey results, and for those that don't have it, you're gonna get an eight and a half by eleven copy of this, so you can start marketing on it. We're gonna talk about that, and we're gonna talk about finalizing your documents. And then I hate to tell you, we're gonna talk about land uses in December. We may wait till January, but I think December's where we're gonna talk about land uses.
I thought we already were talking about land uses.
Well, I'm talking to your table, permitted uses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So our packet for next month is gonna be to us, what?
I'm gonna get it to you probably in a couple of weeks. Yeah, I get it to Ed, and Ed gets it too, so, I get it to Ed probably in a couple of weeks, so you have at least a couple of weeks to look over it.
Right.
Okay. Um, table permitted uses is gonna...
Take some time.
Well, yes and no. Remember, we can't create non-conformity, so there's certain limits to what I can do. I have to preserve the rights of property owners that currently have property now if there's only a lot of it. But, there's really only two options you have. You can have a table permitted uses that's a laundry list, starts with A, ends with Z, and it's a thousand pages long, lists every land use known to man. Not a big fan of that, but it doesn't matter if I'm a big fan of it or not, it matters what you all want, the staff and you. I'm going to suggest you consider table permitted uses based on land use category of these. Ag, childcare education, manufacturing, uh, travel, transportation, residential, utilities, so that you have liked uses grouped together. Makes it a lot easier for your staff to enforce. You're gonna get both options. You're gonna get my recommendation, obviously, and we're gonna play with that recommendation. And if you don't like my recommendation, if you want the other option, we'll accommodate you, not a big deal.
No, don't make it any harder than it is.
No. But I wanna make sure that I'm giving you the tools that you're comfortable with, not what I'm comfortable with.
Well, I'm, it, it is easier if, if the use is current, then we don't have to go through a tax change event before we do an application for rezoning.
Any other questions of mine? I'm, I, I see a lot of concern on people's faces, I get it, because it's a lot of work, but that's why your staff is here and I'm here to help you through the process, okay? And we'll make sure we get you a comfort level with how we're moving forward in terms of what this is gonna look like. And next month, think about it, we get to have some fun, we're actually gonna draw, we're, we're gonna put color to the map. It's gonna be a beautiful thing.
I do that all the time. Anyway.
Thank you all for your attention, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right.
Can you find this one?
Last item on the agenda, next alliance is public confidence, there is no public, so there'll be no comments. Uh, if nobody objects, we go have a motion for attorney. If I have a second? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Me and Stan's adjourned. Thank you all.
Nothing.
I've reduced it down.